Seven P M, Kulei Palama Neighborhood Board is in session. We're gonna be having a moment of silence to honor the fallen firefighter, twenty-five-year-old Jeffrey Fiala and to honor his family. One minute starts now. One minute has passed. We're gonna continue on with the city monthly reports. Honolulu Fire Department. Anybody online? Moving along with Honolulu Police Department District One. My goodness.
Lieutenant, uh, what they calling?
So Jipu?
Yeah.
He said somebody else is gonna pull in. That's okay, uh, H P D District Five?
Hi, good evening. Maschino from District Five. So.
Hi.
I go over the. Hi, good evening. I'll go over the monthly statistics for the month of December. So, for the month of December, we had seven aggravated assaults, thirteen auto thefts, five burglaries, six robberies, two sex assaults, fifteen simple assaults, forty-four thefts, and nine, um, car break-ins. We had a total number of three thousand one hundred and eight calls for service. So I'm just go over a couple of the, um, cases of not writing for me that I found interesting. One was a robbery that happened in the Sumner Street area. The complainant was hanging out, uh, when a male acquaintance approached him and demanded his, uh, jewelry around his neck, his necklace and his pendant. The complainant refused to, uh, relinquish the property. So the suspect, uh, had a knife and he actually sliced the complainant. Police, um, officers later located the possible suspect matching the description and at the time, they couldn't get a positive ID from the complainant because he was taken to the hospital for his apparent injuries. Well, the officers were able to arrest him for a warrant that he had. The case was later, uh, signed to a robbery detective and our crime reduction units later on went ahead and they located him, apprehended him, and placed him under arrest for that robbery. We also had another robbery near the, uh, Marrois housing area. Our officer was diligently patrolling the area. He heard loud screaming coming from, uh, about twenty feet away. As he turned his attention to the area, he noticed a male, a juvenile male was being beaten up and, um, so other juvenile males were trying to take his property from him. So he diligently went over there and he was able to scare off the suspects. They all fled on foot. Only thing is, the complaining in the case, the juvenile male was untruthful with the officers and lied about his, um, name, his parents' name and his address. Our officer had to navigate through that investigation and finally was able to get a hold of the parents. And we later found out that the juvenile male lied to the officer because he wasn't supposed to be hanging around that area. A detective later followed up with the families and they withdrew the complaint. Um, as of now, I don't have anything else. I'll take any questions, comments, or concerns.
Any questions from work? Evelyn?
Hi, uh, Evelyn Cullen. My question. Is I've been calling nine-one-one a lot, um, non-emergency for vehicles on Kulei Street in the morning rush hour as well as, um, afternoon. Um, S M B trucking as well as Capone, they use one of the two lanes going in either direction as their personal parking space. So, um, I think I've been calling a lot. Um, if officers, um, patrol the area, if they could cite the vehicles, because sometimes it's there for three hours on the, on the road. I'm sure Lloyd could attest to that being truthful. So, um, if H P D, I think it would be more the daytime shift. And I'm sure they see the vehicles as well. I mean, if.
Sorry, can I get? Go ahead.
On Kulei Street.
Between.
Uh, Democrat and Home Row.
Democrat and Home Row. Okay, I'll have, I'll relay the message over to the day watch officers. Do you know around what time this is?
Um, in the morning when I leave, maybe around, sometimes it can be around eight o'clock, but definitely when I'm coming home from work around three. And then I go out again, maybe about six, it's still there and I call. When I'm coming down the road, I'm already on calling.
Okay.
I don't know what happens, but I call all the time around the same time.
I'll pass the message on to the officers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Then I have a, I have a concern that was raised to me. Couple of community constituents and the area of concern is Kamiamia Shopping Center area, Makua Hiri and Hala Drive. Um, there was a grandmother that was walking her granddaughter to school, to Kapalama Elementary. She was in the crosswalk on the green, so she was in the right of way. But there was a car that sped, did not pay attention and ran that red light and almost hit them head-on. So she called the police. I don't have the police report number and I do not have the officer's name. But it might be of good interest to like maybe do a sign wave in that area or have some officers that don't have their blue lights on or have some officers on standby just waiting for that accident to happen. Cause in the morning, this is true, because I do get my breakfast early in the morning from McDonald's over there. And I do observe some people sometimes not paying attention and not taking the time to be safe for each other. So I think it might be a good idea to do maybe some sting operations around there and you might find some, there's gonna be a lot of tickets to remind the public to stay safe.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. Actually, um, I've actually almost got T-boned at that intersection one time from exiting the Kamiamia Shopping Center. Same thing, uh, same situation. Vehicle actually ran the red light, almost T-boned me and he took off. So I will reach out to my community policing team, see if we can do a sign waving. Also, if we can also maybe set up like a speed trailer to let the community know the speed limit on that area. And then if we can also have officers saturate the area a little bit more during the morning time to see if we can actually find any people violating those type of offenses.
Yeah, I'm just concerned because that's gonna be some tragedy waiting to happen. There's a lot of kids. There's a lot of kids and kids. Run as quickly and they don't look both ways, even though you have the right of way to walk across the street. Some children will just walk. So please, before an accident happens or fatality occurs, if we can be proactive, that would be great to save a life.
I have a concern. Lit Vesquis. Um, I reported a, um, there was a tent that was set up from the homeless on Liliha and Vineyard. Police officers came and I'm thankful that they came, but they told me that the property is owned by Douglas Emmett. So all they could do was tell them to leave. So they, there were about five of them and then they moved over to the bus stop. They've been there now for three weeks. They went, they came back on the property. So the state cleans up that property. So I'm concerned whereas who really owns the property? Douglas Emmett or the state? Because now they're getting more people over there and what I'm afraid of is that once they start getting, you know.
Established.
Established. There's gonna be like Demets and all over. So who owns it? If the state cleans it up and they're telling me that Douglas Emmett owns it and the security at Douglas is not telling them to, to get away. We're in a catch twenty-two and then, you know, I've seen more of them when I was across the street watching them. They're selling drugs there. So it's, it's becoming a worse situation.
Okay, thank you for the question. That's a great question. Uh, the Liliha Vineyard Corner, yes you said?
Yes.
So I would have to actually have an officer come out and look to see. I know you said an officer did come out. They actually asked the people to move, but they said that it does belong to the state. I would have to confirm again to see if it does belong to the state or if they're on the sidewalk, if it's a city and county sidewalk or was they're on private property?
Not on the sidewalk, it's on the property.
Okay, it was on the private property then. So was there a security guard or was there a representative there to actually ask the people to move along?
No, only H P D and when they moved, they moved for one couple of hours to the bus stop. And at that time, I was hoping that maybe H P, H P D would tell them that's city and county now. You can't stay there. But there was no follow-up.
Right, so with that, like if they're at the bus stop, we cannot, um, assume that they're not waiting for the bus at the time. We cannot assume and tell them, you know, they need to leave. It is a public bus stop. We cannot assume that they aren't waiting for the bus. Cause I've actually had people move from a sidewalk, go to a bus stop, wait there two or three hours and later on, actually I see them board the bus. So we can educate them. We could see if they need any type of medical attention. We can ask them if they wanna seek any shelters. We can see if we can get them into a shelter, like the Home Row or something. But yes, definitely, um, if you guys do see them on the city sidewalks, we can go over there and we can offer them that type of assistance.
I understand, I'm a homeless advocate, don't get me wrong. I've been dealing with them for twenty years. But when I see drug being handed out and I, I know all the difference between if you need, if you need help and you need assistance between self-help papers being given, you know, that's what my concern is because we have children walking to school in that area and everything and that's my concern. I don't want tents to be.
Here's a curveball suggestion. Maybe we, maybe if you can forward this to also Narco Vice and they can do some undercover simultaneously.
Right.
Now, if that is occurring, if and when that does occur, that can be caught in the action.
And, and also, if, if it possible, if you do see drug activity going on, if you can, would you guys also call the police for us also? And we can at least respond and we can at least do some investigation to see.
I will do that, sir.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Community online. Thank you so much. Thank you for all that you do, have a good evening.
I have one more thing, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention. Uh, I thought my community policing sergeant was gonna be online. Sorry to take up more time, but we do have a District Co-, uh, Five Coffee with a Cop coming up. It's gonna be February twenty. It's gonna be Friday, February twenty, February twenty-eighth.
Okay.
It's gonna be at the Y Camilo Shopping Center, located at fourteen fourteen Dillingham Boulevard, Friday, February twenty-eighth. Y Camilo Shopping Center. And the time will be from nine A M to eleven A M. Nine A M to eleven A M. If you have an opportunity. Excuse me?
McDonald's?
Yes.
McDonald's?
So McDonald's. So if you guys have an opportunity, come out, share some stories and talk story with the police officer over a cup of coffee would be appreciated. But thank you guys again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, have a nice evening. See you next month.
You too. See you next month.
Moving along with Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda.
Hi there, sorry I can't be there in person. I just have a fast general announcement. Um, we're, go to our boardofwatersupply.com slash water wisdom. You can watch a short video on conducting your own water audit. So we have a water wisdom program that offers a tool to help customers conserve water and detect leaks. So through this program, you can learn how to perform a home water audit to ensure your fixtures and appliances meet low-flow standards and to identify leaks that waste water. So, um, so go to that website, the boardofwatersupply.com, water wisdom, like I mentioned, to see the video. And we also have a free water audit bag at our public service building at six thirty South Baritania Street. So, uh, so let make every drop count. So just my quick announcement.
Okay, any questions? Any questions from the community? Very none. Thank you so much, Iris, I'll see you next month.
Thank you, see you next month.
Uh, moving along to Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transit, Heart, Ramisa Gonzalez. Debbie?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, good evening, Charabenez Board members and community members. Um, joining us today is, uh, Tana Conaschero from our contractor, Non Inc. and Patrick Watson from our contractor, Frank V. Colucci. I have a short update for the C C U R for Dillingham project. So we will be shifting the work zone between Kamiamia Highway off-ramp to Laumaka Street to the Maoka side of the road. Traffic will be on the Makai side of the road. The shift will start on the night of January twenty-fourth and will be fully in effect on January twenty-fifth. East and westbound traffic will still be allowed while the work zone is being shifted. We usually shift, um, like late at night, so we don't, uh, cause any issues for traffic. This condition with the work zone on the Maoka side of the road and the traffic, um, on the Makai side of the road between Kamiamia Highway freeway, uh, freeway off-ramp to Laumaka Street will be for about four months. We also have our quarterly business and community meeting coming up on Thursday, January thirtieth. At one P M, the online meeting will cover our ongoing projects, lane closures, public impacts in the city center segments of the Honolulu Rail Transit Project through Kulei, Ely, downtown Chinatown and Kakao. And I can put the meeting information in the chat. We hope to see you there.
Okay.
And then I have. I'm sorry?
Oh, go ahead.
I have responses to a few questions we received, um, in the November Neighborhood Board meeting. So we received a question from Emma Evelyn and summarized, I believe she asked what type of flood insurance Heart has and mentioned areas of concern with flooding along the project. So Heart is insured for up to fifty million for flood damages during construction and complies with the requirements under the National Flood Insurance Program. After we turn over the system to D T S, they have their own insurance requirements that will be followed. And flooding is not an issue since the guideway is elevated thirty, forty feet in the air. And this was taken into consideration when the, uh, route was planned, designed, and approved by the city. We also received another question from Thomas Peck. Uh, summarize, I believe he answered about, uh, asked about Heart allowing Hiko to use part of the structures that we're building to help Hiko out. Um, I tried to best understand his question, but, um, if he's here, uh, if he can provide, provide clarity on what he meant by structures that we're building.
He's not here tonight.
Okay, um, well, we put together an answer, so I'll just, uh, read it to you guys. So Heart, Hiko, and the appropriate city departments work on the designs for the electrical utility relocations. Hiko makes the ultimate determination based on their own standards. If Hiko requests a revision, Heart will give them updated drafts and plans, uh, drafts of plans and they decide to approve or not. So that concludes our update and responses. If you would like to get into contact with Heart, you can email us at info@honolulutransit.org or call the twenty-four-hour project hotline at eight oh eight five six six two two nine nine and I'll put that in the chat.
I, I. Can I have a, can I ask a question first, Evelyn?
Go ahead.
Thanks so much. I know on, on TV right now, um, they have that thing where any businesses that have been impacted because of the rail, all of these lane closures, um, how is that process gonna be? Who gets to apply and how much will that reimburse the businesses?
Yeah, so the Transit Mitigation Fund was actually created by the council members. Um, I can, if you wanna shoot me an email or, um, I can take your info privately in the chat, I can direct you to the right council member. They have more information as it's their program.
Okay, if you can put that information in the chat box, because this will be played live over and over. So if that information can be made readily available as this is so relevant and it's happening right now, so the general public in the community will want to know, especially the businesses that have been impacted with the rail line. So if you can put that in the chat box as that will be something that people will be taking a look at.
Definitely.
Well, Evelyn?
Uh, my, 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 uh, question goes back to, I think, Mr. Peck, what he was asking at that time. Why doesn't, um, Hiko, um, use the rail line as, um, a way of attaching whatever they need for the, for Hiko through the, um, the pillars in the middle of the street versus, um, having to have telephone poles on the sidewalks? Cause there's already gonna have the rail, right? Running through wherever it's gonna be. Why can't they attach, why can't Hiko attach it to the rail underneath on the concrete pillars? And then my other thing is, um, Heart wants so many of these other properties along Dillingham. Why? I'm afraid, um, that, um, Heart is gonna request for that to happen under, which, um, currently the ownership is under Kamiamia Schools and then eventually down the line, it's gonna end up in private ownership hands again, like. Like what's happening. They're gonna ask to, um, condemn the property, take it away, use it for whatever reason and eventually down the road secretly, it ends up in private hands. And that's just taking property away from Kamiamia Schools. That's a private estate. So I can see that happening. It's been happening. And to ask for so much property on Dillingham is besides me and that's all Kamiamia School lands. And so I say no. Taking it away. No, it's not necessary. Take that down, calm down.
Yep.
Um, so I look for, we look forward to the feedback at the next meeting. If you could have that readily available for the answers on, on the eminent domain, what that's gonna look like, um, transit-oriented development, what could be taking its place, any possibilities? And when that, when those type of community town hall meetings to get feedback from the community will be, that would be great.
Was the act, uh, did I?
So I.
Sorry.
I can, uh, find out a little more information on the eminent domain. Um, I do know that those, uh, properties, they're assisting in the Maoka shift. So that, uh, was designed, um, to save, you know, the taxpayers and project hundreds of millions of dollars, a lot of money. Um, yeah, and we're working closely with Kamiamia Schools to make sure that all parties are, um, you know, happy. So, uh, as for transit-oriented development, Heart does not speak on that. Um, I am not too sure on, uh, which department here would be able to speak on that, but, uh, yeah, I can find out about the properties about, uh, for eminent domain. A little more.
Was having, uh, meetings in Wanalua High School concerning the matter of transit-oriented development of in and around the rail line. So if you can reach out to her any possible way, that would be great. But also going back to Kamiamia Schools and the land in and around Y Camilo area, I know there has been conversations, everybody talks to me, everybody. I shake hands with everyone. And so therefore, I do know information about all those businesses in the Y Camilo area that have been spoken to from Kamiamia Schools because that is Kamiamia School land. And therefore, how can we as taxpayers that need to have affordable housing, that have all of these interests in and around this area can be part of that greater conversation instead of having private conversations? So please come back and get that answer by the next board meeting, that would be great.
I mean, you mentioned, um, saving the city taxpayers hundreds of millions of dollars. We are already billions in the puka. Yes.
Billions.
So that's nothing to me.
Can I, one question?
Wait, wait, wait.
One more, one more.
Two more.
This morning's, um, uh, what's that? This morning's chaos with the, what happened on Dillingham, was that Heart's? That closed down Dillingham Boulevard?
It was within our project vicinity, but it is not project-related.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I just, oh, sorry, I just have two quick questions. What, you know the, um, Middle Street Station? I'll, I'll just give them to you both. Uh, when does that open? And then the second part of that is, is that huge homeless encampment? Is that gonna be cleaned up over there? Because I, I don't feel safe walking over there. And if that's a benefit, I'd be happy with that.
Yeah, so we plan to, um, to turn over segment two, so up to Middle Street, um, end of this year, uh, most likely, that's the plan right now. Uh, as for the homeless encampment, um, that would be a conversation that we would have to have with, uh, you know, um, D F M.
Alright.
But I can bring up, yeah, I can bring up that, that encampment with my team and then we can see if there's anything that could be done.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you so much, I look forward to your answers or feedback in the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good evening. We're gonna move along to board business. Do we have forums? Do we have forums? So we will start conversation, filling up vacancies, two get large seats. Um, any, any volunteers? Anybody wants to come along on board?
Oh, I know that.
I don't see or hear. Okay, we're gonna move it along.
No questions, why?
Ready? Approval of minutes for Wednesday, November twentieth? Anybody move to approve the minutes? Anybody second? Motion to approve?
Any corrections?
Any corrections?
No.
Hearing none, adopted. Thank you so much. C, three absent letter, Angela, remember Angela Young? That's three absences, she's not here tonight, is she online? Okay. Motion to vote vacate proposition?
Vacate the scene.
Vacate the scene.
Motion, second.
Second. Carries. C is vacated. Thank you so much. Who, who, huh? Can we have to vote? Cards? Deuce. I. She's second.
We have third.
Anybody? Third?
Yeah, mania.
Any objections?
No objections.
Oh, how lovely. Okay, carries. C is vacant, she's okay. The motion to support Alamoana Kakaako, neighborhood board eleven, resolution supporting bill forty-six, twenty twenty-four to establish an empty house homes tax in Honolulu.
Motion.
Anybody second? Yep, second. Second, any discussion? Can we raise, uh, sorry, I was not familiar with that. It's available online, but it's a tax people's homes that sit empty.
Are vacant, empty.
In Kakao.
How does that affect, um, people who are doing short-term rentals? I know there's already stuff.
This is for long-term.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then how, hmm, would that go, would that work in favor for the people in short-term?
Short-term can only happen in specific zoning.
Yeah.
So I think the ones that we're talking about is.
Except.
To be specific, the multimillion-dollar homes that people come here and invest in and price out the rest of paradise. Those homes.
Yeah.
In Kakao, that's what we're talking about.
I would say like that, third, fourth base.
Yeah, like, you know, one bedroom, two million. Yeah, that kind of stuff.
Certainly, that's where Kakao exactly. But not only Kakao. I was. That was just in general.
So it's just in general.
In general.
Yeah, investor properties.
Yes.
That stuff. So we had a first, we had a second, and so the discussion.
Oh, who sits first?
Who's first?
Oh, I motion.
Yeah. And who's second? Evelyn? Any objections? I say if you're gonna invest that much money, you should invest in Hawaii. Okay. And moving along to E, motion to support proceed, neighborhood board twenty-one's resolution requesting Honolulu Police Department empower their citizen community policing program to approve and, uh, to approve and train selected honorary volunteer citizens to issue violation tickets to enhance public safety and to improve the quality of life for their citizens. I think, uh, that's available online to read in its full glory. In addition to that is for like fireworks, people to report sometimes their neighbors or other illegal activities that are going on in their community that people.
But hasn't that been going on, but, but people?
So this is to.
Are we discussing that or?
Train, that's what we're discussing right now.
Yeah, we're discussing, but it's. Yeah.
Oh, we'll shift to support it. Yeah.
We'll shift to support.
I, I mean, I have something to say. I, I'm not a big fan of it, I just think, I think it's a recipe for disaster.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, there are many people out there in for, you know, doing tickets. They give a ticket out, they have to go show up in court if something goes wrong. Who's going to be held liable for that, the city? Or is it gonna be the individual? I mean, I can only imagine if I go up to a car and I say, well, I think you're too loud. People are gonna punch me in the face, you know what I mean? It's not gonna go, I have no real authority. I just, I think it's a terrible idea.
It's a. I agree here, especially since like racial bias, gender bias. Like I can just go up to, you know, random person that's not my race and I just be like, oh, well, you're a certain race, here's a ticket because you are on this line even though you were. But I think you were, so.
And the police have a lot of training that we wouldn't be able to afford in a disaster, obviously.
I, I, I think we have police to do, to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna table it?
Well, I think we should object.
I, I agree, you should.
I checked it out.
Throw it down. Throw it down.
You don't have to um, the motion was to support, but if you can do, if there's um any objections, do it, then we just do a vote.
I think we should do a vote.
Okay, let's go vote.
I'll I'll vote yes.
It's a role call.
Okay.
You.
Let me see.
I for, I'm for community policing. I think I trust citizens that are well trained.
Not better, no. But I think, no, I think this is for like citizens like you guys, be trained and be given, kind of thing, so.
Yeah.
I don't trust myself.
Um.
I believe.
I believe this.
I would trust myself a lot if I was trained.
Yeah, could I, is are we opening this discussion about it?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I believe.
Okay, so can we get some scenarios, just so for example, say there's like, okay, I live in Backstreet, right? For example, there's kids scrapping and so how how do I, and what would the police tell me to do to? Yeah, you know, you.
See, we're not even in, but we're not even talking about the program yet. This is enabling people to get trained.
To train to issue tickets.
I have a question.
But less. I think it's it's.
What kind of tickets or we don't even know.
Violations.
Yeah.
Tickets, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Are they, are they building off of people, like a group who already done this, like a community has done this, like on the main line or something?
No.
I'll help myself with that.
Yeah, so there are community patrol teams already that are trained.
Mm-hmm.
Um but what they're actually gonna do, like what kind of violation tickets they're gonna give out, of course they don't have a badge, they can't arrest anybody.
Yeah. Right.
They can't prosecute anybody and sit on, so it's like.
But they would still be held liable in in the city, I don't think.
No.
This is like, no, you know, this is kind of like, sorry, can I can I explain this a little bit further because I seem to be the only one here that actually
Vulgar.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Right.
is kind of setting a lot of, buzz a little bit about this, so.
Why I have a question too.
So the community policing team is more like reaching out, educating the public. Hey, you know what? Maybe we shouldn't store firecrackers in the garage right across the street more than fifty pounds worth.
Yes.
Having that greater community outreach and conversation and education
Yeah.
is where it's at. It's not necessarily about giving out tickets. It's not like I'm gonna give you a ticket and I'll see you in court on Monday, here's your appointment time.
Mm-hmm.
That's not their kuliana, that is mine.
No, but I.
So for a community, it's more education and outreach and having that greater conversation and not being judgmental, but more education.
Yeah, I agree, okay, I agree. You, I agree with the whole idea you just said about community policing, however, that's not what this resolution is about. This resolution is about issuing citations.
Citation for citizens.
Yeah.
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 Citizens.
Citizens.
So I mean, I agree with your whole, what you explained, but that's not at all what that was about.
Your citizen homeowners basically are.
Yeah.
What is citizen citation, it's not, it's not like felony, other citizens.
Yeah. Citizens. That's.
No, but, no, but it's still like.
I want to go tickets, everybody.
I mean, I've said that.
Yeah.
So I mean, I have a two round draw, like wait.
I mean, that's to get into.
Yeah.
I have a question, but but that's where education comes.
Come up with.
Sorry, I wasn't here for the police section, but they, have they had a response about the mediation thing?
Yeah.
Because you know the, how I brought up last uh last meeting where I asked if the police had like any form of mediation whenever there was a fight that was instigated or anything, uh like mediation training? I'm just curious, like, do we?
What is? Do we have to do mediation training?
Because if the, I'm I'm still like lingering on that question.
So anybody that goes into the community, you should, you should volunteer and then they they will train you on de-escalation techniques.
Yeah. But, okay.
That's part of the escalation techniques when you're.
I mean. Yeah. But they also have de-escalation techniques too, right? And that's what I was trying to.
When you're volunteering with policing, the community policing team, you'll be trained on all those aspects.
Mediation that are specifically.
Yeah. Okay. But the resolution itself is just um training citizens.
Citizens. To cite other.
And to cite other citizens for violation tickets.
On the.
I have a question, who's, who's, who are they reporting back to? Or like who are they, who's community number check?
Community policing.
The community policing team.
The the. The community, not like the police or like a board.
Well, the, the, community policing teams are police H D officers though.
This, it's a police.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they're a specialized unit, so they're non, they're non like felonies and things like that, yeah. They don't make arrests, they're more education and outreach.
Mm. They're there for the. Yeah.
However, if this board feels uncomfortable with that measure and that conversation, that is fine, we can vote on it.
I feel uncomfortable, uh that's my stuff. I will vote no. Um especially like as said, with the racial profiling, racial biases and all that.
That shouldn't even be a conversation, but that's trained out.
Yes. So yeah, and I don't see anything regarding here about like D E I, like diversity education, right, then whatever.
That's true, yeah.
D E I, you kind of get the point. Sorry, I'm not good with acronyms or reading.
Yeah, let's do a vote, cause we gotta move on.
Evelyn.
No.
D E I was standing.
I'm gonna say yes, actually. I do that for free, you know, I be like those people off to the street.
You talk to people, you talk to people.
Yeah, I do, I do for free, when giving them a ticket, that'd be a whole other level.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Yes.
I'm for it.
And.
Cocktail bombs, like all my.
I don't give a shit, but I'm for the education. It's D E I, it's giving you tickets.
You talk to people.
Yeah, some people already. Donald.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Eric.
No.
Card.
Name.
Lloyd.
Yes.
It's a certain personality too, I guess, you know.
Lin.
It's a volunteer thing too.
No.
Yeah, it's volunteer.
Amanda.
Yes, I was at a war.
Four, four, no, did not pass.
Oy.
Interesting, very interesting.
That was it.
We have the conversation array, people.
I do.
On Iowa.
Sure, I do too, like.
Yes.
Yeah.
I disagree.
I do. I wanna give out a ticket.
It's a safety.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't give out a ticket, but I definitely would give out a.
Yes. Safety, service calls are me, next one.
Education. We do service calls.
Okay, uh okay, thank you so much, everybody. And F, motion to support neighborhood commission's resolution urging the state legislature to amend the state sunshine law to allow more discussion in neighborhood board meetings and designate the neighborhood board, neighborhood commission at the governing body as a governing body for the neighborhood board for the sunshine law.
Oh shit.
Yes.
Anybody motion?
Motion.
Motion, yeah.
Anybody second?
Second, second.
Discussion?
Um I mean, A, we got, we got the sunshine law for us. Um would be nice, you know, cause we're not, plus like we're not paid, so
Hmm.
Would be nice.
yeah, we're volunteers, so that's a great thing for us. Give us more discussion.
I, I agree more, open communication is key.
To everything, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so are we gonna vote or any objection?
No.
No.
Just a listen.
Thank you so much. Alrighty, moving on to presentations, U S Army Natural Resource Program, Jenna Upco. Hopefully same that way, outreach and volunteer program specialist. Online, thank you. Go ahead.
Jenna?
Hi, good evening, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um so thank you, thank you so much for having me and um for your time today, but um uh I shared my presentation, um so please view that, but I just wanted to share a little bit information about um our program. So I'm Jenna Patagi, I'm from the Army Natural Resources Program on Oahu. Um we are located on Schofield Berry. Um a little bit about our program. Our program started um after the lawsuit from Makoa Valley. Um and after a consultation with the fish and wildlife, we ended up, that's how our program started. Um we specialize in endangered species, mostly throughout the Waikani region. Um but also we do have some management unit within the Ko'ala um mountains as well. Um but I just wanted to share, um we do have a few volunteer opportunities uh in the next, oh well, this month and next month that do involve planting. Um if you're interested, um you can go on to our website, I can put it on the chat. Uh W W W dot O N R P dot com. Um just to preface, our volunteer trip, uh we do have limited seating because we do work in really remote areas where we do off-roading. Um but you know, part of our work, what we do, especially with issues and danger taxa, um we do a lot of different lengths to protect them, such as surveys and monitoring, um invasive species control through fencing, predator control and weed control. And with our restoration, um where we do proper fuel conservation, um seed labbing and um nursery work. So tying into our volunteer trips this month and next month, um we do have outplanting opportunities where um we can get the public involved to put these species into the wild, um where these species were collected. Um yeah, and also um just to shout out that if you have anyone interested in getting their foot in the door in conservation, we do have our summer internships. Um the applications will open at the end of this month, uh January twenty-seventh. Um it is very competitive, we offer six internships. Um but it is uh hands-on training, um all applicants or all interns will get the on-the-job training from helicopter safety, helicopter aviation, transportation, external roads, um two-four wheel drive, um as well as uh weed control, um specify Hawaii um H D O A training. Um yeah, that's just a little bit about our program. Um I kind of said through that. But does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Go ahead, hi, um Troy Raba, have you guys reached out to the high school students yet for volunteers?
Yes, so um we partner mostly with high schools um uh within the Waikani mountain region, so we partner with Nanapuli, Waikani, um Waipahu High School, Lelehua, um Waialua and Mililani.
Um by any chance, would you guys reach out to Farrington?
Um yeah, sure, I mean, um they would, I can put my, my, what you call it, my uh email in the chat, but um yeah, we can set that up.
I can send you um one of the uh social studies teachers' uh contact information, he would love to be a part of that.
Okay, yeah, for sure.
Kairos Perkins.
Thanks. Any other questions for the board? Any questions to the community online? Huh? Okay, thank you so much, Jenna.
I'm forward you to, you know.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, no questions. Thank you so much, Jenna, and other names.
Yeah.
Thank you, aloha. Um next is H.
Aloha.
Fire and life safety presentation from Carl Osuka, Fire Inspector, Community Relations Office. So we have that presentation next.
Thank you, Madam Chair and uh board members from Kaluhi Palama. Okay, so we're gonna bring up my presentation.
Yeah, just a few moments.
Unless you wanna use this, oh, good.
Yeah, he's good.
Good job.
Thank you so much, you were prepared though. And we're just gonna play this fireworks safety, okay.
So, yeah, so Chair Ibanez um asked me to do uh fireworks safety because of the January first tragedy uh with uh four people passing uh and possibly more uh because of the fireworks incident. Uh so, let's go through this presentation real quick. I'm gonna kind of uh give you guys a little bit of a science lesson. So what is fire? You cannot have fire without oxygen, heat and a fuel. So if you take any one of these legs away, fire goes away. Uh example would be if I put water on a grass fire or a paper fire, I'm taking away the heat. If I turn off a propane tank, I'm taking away the fuel. If I have a pot of burning oil on the stove, I cover it with a cover, I'm taking away the oxygen, fire goes out. Next slide. So what's an explosion? So on the previous slide, uh we know that fire is a chemical reaction. An explosion is a rapid release of energy from the reaction. So that's how a firecracker would pop, that's how the fireworks that professional um fireworks shows. Um you know, they, it shoots up and kaboom. Okay, so it's actually an explosion. Okay, next slide. So thi- these are the uh NFPA's uh National Fireworks Statistics. Uh I do not have our city's statistics on me, but thirty-one thousand three hundred two reported fires and this is throughout the whole year of twenty twenty-two. So example, Fourth of July or Chinese New Year and uh New Years, yeah. Uh six civilian deaths nationally in twenty twenty-two. We already had four, uh we had five uh this this New Years. So uh E Rs treated ten thousand two hundred fireworks injuries, children fifteen years or younger, twenty percent and a hundred nine million dollars in property damage.
Two thousand twenty-two.
And that is, that was in two thousand twenty-two, everything's way more expensive now. Right, next slide. So what is our fireworks law? So our law here, it should be unlawful, pretty much in the highlighted areas, for any minor to possess, purchase, sell or set off, ignite or otherwise cause to explode any displaying fireworks or firecrackers. So the thing about this one, I wanna say that, you know, basically if you're under eighteen, you're not supposed to even touch fireworks or firecrackers, whether it's legal or not. And in the green area, parents, guardians, any other persons having custody of and control of any minor who knowingly permit the minor to possess. So if you have your child, try and light a firecracker, you're in violation of this law.
Yeah.
Um and the last slide, any person desiring to set off, ignite, uh discharge or otherwise cause to explode firecrackers on New Year's Eve shall apply and obtain a permit from the fire chief and that's done online. Uh you can get to the permit section um from our website, fire dot home uh gov. Uh and you must purchase your permit at least ten days prior to the set off, uh the fireworks setting date. Okay, so we all kind of know about the Leu Manu tragedy. Um we had permission from Oahu News Now to just kind of recap, show you this video. Okay, we can go to the next slide. I hope everyone out there was able to hear the uh volume of the newscast. But
They'll be played on, yeah.
so uh this twenty twenty-five Leu Manu tragedy, uh at the time I made this uh presentation for the twenty-plus injured and the injured was from shrapnel burns. And we don't ever think of uh P T S D as an injury, but it is a psychological injury. Uh and just to let uh the public know uh psychological injury doesn't only happen with the families involved, it does affect first responders also.
Yes.
Yes.
So patients, family, friends, first responders. Um and I'd like to also, I didn't put it in here, but one of your own lost his life also uh after a fireworks injury.
Oh.
So, Kalii.
Kali.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, it's one of them blown off, yeah.
Nineteen-year-old.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So just to go over a couple of safety tips, um I have been on all three news channels prior um giving you guys safety tips, uh there's just a couple here and there that you guys can do to protect yourselves while uh playing with legal fireworks, uh firecrackers only. Uh P P E, uh personal protective equipment, yeah.
Protective.
Gloves, goggles, hearing protection, people don't ever think of that. Um hey, we got noise canceling headsets now, wear them, uh protect your hearing. Uh pants, shoes, long sleeve shirts. Yeah, you should always have a bucket of water or better yet, a hose with a. Yeah, you should always have a bucket of water, or better yet, a hose with a nozzle that's charged, meaning you turn on the spigot, water's in the hose, ready to go. Uh always keep minors away from firecrackers, fireworks. Uh clear your garages, carports, any combustibles or flammable's. Uh you never know if uh illegal legal fireworks can fly in and maybe you, you know, just like the firework explosion that happened. Uh some people may have gasoline in their carports or garages. Put all those things away. Uh no drugs or alcohol with fireworks. And please, please have your firecracker permit uh on hand and get a permit if you're gonna pop firecrackers. Okay? So uh this already happened. Um I'm hoping the state and city um can make another day. I don't have any information on me right now if they're gonna have another day for turning in fireworks. But items accepted would be firecrackers, sparklers, fountain, cracker balls, aerial shells, aerial tubes, uh roman candles, cakes, skyrockets. Items not accepted, homemade modified fireworks, improvised explosives, guns and ammunition. Uh always transport in a trunk or the bed of the truck, never in uh the main compartment of your car. Uh and if you can, keep it in the original packaging if possible. So, the firecrackers, sparklers, fountain, cracker balls, you know, wait, this is a duplicate, so sorry. Um if you do, turn the fireworks in, no questions asked. So, you know, feel free, turn it, turn it in. Um that's good. All right, any questions? Yes?
In the amnesty program, how do you like properly dispose of the fireworks?
Uh we have a professional, um the state actually would contract with a professional uh company that specializes in disposal, yeah.
Disposal.
It's kind of like a hazmat disposal, yeah.
So, I got a question. So, I was looking at the law that you had mentioned, so that would even consider um little yellow boxes of the white pop pops as being illegal? For kids to play with?
No, um.
That's novelty?
Yeah, that's novelty. So you don't need a, you don't need a permit for those.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay.
Well, that's good.
Is there a question?
Even the, even the bigger ones that look like firecrackers that doesn't have a fuse, those are, you don't need a permit.
I have the three quick questions, one is that um a firework permit wouldn't have covered, I I can give you my three questions and then it'll go into your group. It wouldn't have covered that tragedy there. And then my second question is, is um is there any requirements or vetting for the permit? And then the last part is, you know how many permits were granted in the years?
Yes, oh, approximately.
Approximately, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so let's go with the last one first.
Okay.
Uh approximately nineteen thousand permits were issued this year. In comparison to the last year, only thirteen thousand.
Oh wow.
So we have even more. Um the permits would not have applied to any illegal fireworks, so um. And so what was the second?
So what, the one with, the, and I can add, the, the, is there any vetting or requirements? And and then um do you credit the increase to the education efforts that you guys have done?
Credit the increase? Well, okay, uh there is no vetting, um necessarily, you must be eighteen years of age, you must have a valid ID, uh you must have a private property to blow it, blow your firecrackers on.
Blow it down.
It can't be on a sidewalk, not supposed to be on the street. Uh and uh you are submitting with that permit that you will abide by the laws.
Hmm.
So, not having a child like the fireworks. Uh or, you know, park it in a public park, which is illegal. Um our education efforts, um as far as fireworks go, um we're just trying to get people to not use the illegal fireworks. And uh think of your neighbors as far as smokes, smoke, you may have, and pets.
Your animals, pets.
Um but uh your neighbors may have emphysema, asthma. Uh if you kind of, as a community, take care of each other, think about, think about the the older people and the younger kids who have breathing difficulties. Uh because it does affect, you know.
What if something catches fire too? Be ready with your homes, you know, dry brush.
So I applied for four online. Um this is me with my goggles and my grandkids with their goggles in here. So we, we did follow the rules. Um and um not everybody did, and that was the result of it.
Yeah.
So that in and of itself is education in the raw, right?
And the increase is impressive though.
Yeah, and 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 waiting in line to ensure that you get, because you bought all of these permits. So I waited like eight-thirty at night at Kahaka, Don Quixote. They sold at three AM in the morning, fifteen minutes it was gone, and I only had four.
Nice.
People had stacks.
Wow.
So.
The number, the number you gave uh that that permits given out, was that statewide or islandwide?
Islandwide, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, we are Honolulu county, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh and Mauna Wa'hu, if your constituents did not know, um firecrackers are the only legal thing to to, you cannot have sparklers, you cannot have, you know, um jumping jacks or uh
Roman candles.
Roman candles, yeah.
Roman candles, that's from back in the days.
No, but it's, it was crazy, just sitting in my own carport, all of the illegal things. I didn't have to go in the middle of the road, I sat in my carport and I was scared because you could feel it, and it was like a couple of blocks away, but you could feel the the pressure like.
I was in my bed with my dog, and I, it was like I wore so.
Animals.
So, sorry, so as far as like education um going moving forward from this tragedy, I mean it's for Halanga, a better analogy, it's kind of like grows a work of art, they're gonna do it anyway. So you might as well force education on them, right? So how can we move forward, how are they gonna enforce education for those who are gonna do it anyway?
They're changing the laws right now.
Um. Actually, I wanna focus my education on the people who wanna be educated.
Changing the laws, you know. Yeah.
So your garages, clean the trash out, sweep up uh any litter clutter that you might have in there. Uh don't store, don't store newspapers, don't store uh anything that can burn. Your uh rain gutters, clean them out. Uh any leaf debris on the roof.
Hmm.
You know, keep yourself safe, um so that if an accident did happen um with your neighbors doing something illegal or, you know, accidents happen, uh you're gonna keep yourself safer. Yeah, because like you said, I, I I truly personally believe that, yeah, people are gonna do what they're gonna do. So you gotta take care of yours, Kolianna.
But as far as like, you know, the kids that aren't gonna be blasting the arrows anyway, like just the simple uh, you know, go get a brick to hold it down, you know, because that's how things tip over, like that kind of, you know, the, you know what I'm saying?
We're not experts, we're not experts in how to properly, properly blow illegal fireworks.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I was just like, do it, you know, I do it for bad kids.
We're not even experts on how to light a firecracker.
I, I think that, that belongs in the home, that's a parent's responsibility, you know. You're the, you're your first child's educator, so. For me, it would be Michaeliana.
Oh, Dawn, ask his question.
Yes, okay, sorry, I'm like, oh, here's another.
I hope we uh can stop the in- the influx of fireworks and firecrackers.
Okay, so that would be a state thing, and yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
It'll be.
Yeah.
Because it's not coming from this place, that's for sure.
Nope, it's not, it's not coming from here, it's coming from Pierce Garden.
Yeah.
Okay, now my question is, um like, are there any safe spaces for sound? Because uh I know a lot of people with PTSD, I know autistics such as I, you know, like we're, like we, we scared, and I, I like had noise-canceling headphones, and even that was like, it's not just, people like think like, oh, it sounds, but it's not just sounds, it's also light, it's also, you know, uh feeling of the ground. So I'm just like lying down on the floor, just mean like, you know, uh going like this pretty much the entire time, so, yeah.
Yeah, um so, soundproofing your home is gonna be expensive. Um I, back in two thousand renovated, I don't have JVC windows anymore, it's a old nineteen seventies house. Uh we have uh double-pane sliding windows with uh vinyl, and and it's pretty soundproofed. We did install two different drapes, blackout drapes, so that you couldn't see the light. Um so, there are things you can do.
Go to the movies.
But it's going to the movie, oh, good idea, good idea.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, can we, can we uh like firefighting or whoever is online,
It's a great idea.
can we like start suggesting like areas of like safe havens for people?
Yeah, point.
Yeah, but like, like, oh my god, wait, yeah, we should watch Wicked, you know.
Yeah, you might be able to.
My friend would take his son up to the mountains where they can see it. I forgot what they, they call it, up uh Wa'ahila, not Wa'ahila, by um Makakila. Way up there. Yeah, he'd take his son up there at New Years, because you can see it, but you can't hear it.
Any questions online? Okay, I think we're gonna move on. Um one question for me. This is kind of on topic but off topic at the same time. Um for Jeffrey Fiala, when is his memorial, and where will it be?
Um you're gonna have to wait for the um the public, yeah.
Respect.
Uh we haven't um, we haven't sent up the the notices yet, so, yeah. Sorry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You'll be back in March.
Yes.
Thank you so much for your time.
And I'll speak in.
Oh, good, yeah, help me out.
Continue back with the Honolulu Fire Department.
Hi, I'm Matt McGurk, uh Kalihi Station Six up the road here. Uh I just got the neighborhood board notes for this month. Um statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in a neighborhood board's geographical area for the previous month. For more detail on incidents and related mapping information, please visit the fire response map on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov under the News and Info tab. If you have questions, please email HFD's Public Affairs and Media Liaison at hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. And so, the information previously requested, incident statistics for December twenty twenty-four. Fires, uh structure, one. Wildland brush, zero. Nuisance fires, which include rubbish fires outside in a structure or vehicle, were ten. Cooking fires, zero. Activated alarms, no fire, eight. Emergencies, medical, one hundred and eighty-three. Motor vehicle collisions with pedestrian, one. Motor vehicle crash collision, seventeen. Mountain rescue, zero. Ocean rescue, zero. Hazardous material incidents, one. Uh the fire safety tips and announcements. Fire safety tip, appliance and electrical safety. Minimize electrical fire risk in your home with these safety tips. Electrical work should be performed by qualified electricians. Check your electrical cords if they're cracked or damaged, replace them. Do not overload wall outlets or power strips, and use certified power strips that meet safety standards. Extension cords should not be used long-term, they are designed for temporary use only. Follow the manufacturer's instructions for all appliances. And for more information, safety tips, and checklists, visit fire.honolulu.gov.
Thank you so much. Any questions for the board? Any questions online? Thank you so much for your time, thank you for all that you do, please stay safe. See you next month. Okay, we're gonna move along to residents and community concerns, three minutes each. Any, anybody in the audience, please have a seat. And then uh your first name and official name.
Oh, okay, I think.
Thank you so much, glad you moved in.
Yeah, I just realized.
Thank you for your excellent competition.
My name is Rand Okimora, I'm the second-generation president of Slim's Power Tools, located at sixteen twenty-six Republican Street in Kalihii. I'm proud to announce that the business my father and my mother started recently celebrated our fifty-second anniversary this past year. Uh I invite you here, all of you, to our thirty-second annual Kalihii Hand Tool Competition, also known as the He-Man Challenge. This is gonna be on Sunday, April twenty-seventh, uh two thousand and twenty-five. The Kalihii Hand Tool Competition will show the speed, accuracy, and convenience that power tools provide, as challengers will try to finish one task faster than it takes the vendor to finish three tasks using power tools. So each year, at the tool competition, we have a fundraising event for the American Diabetes Association, and through the years, we've raised over thirty thousand dollars for the American diabetes. We will be closing a portion of the Republican Street and having a one-day sale only on a Sun- on Sunday, featuring over thirty vendors from all over the US. This is on Sunday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, from eight AM to two PM. Any questions?
Any questions for the board? Any questions online? Hearing them, thank you so much for this presentation.
Thank you very much, thank you.
So congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh any other community concerns? Anybody online?
Um I have like question, um can we get back Amazon? I kind of wanna like update on what's up with Amazon and how's everything going. Um and also with Commando Meta Schools, I'd like after part, I'm like very curious, especially understanding about the worldwide murals and everything, like I just wanna see an update between the two companies. I don't know if that's still up there, I mean.
Also, speaking of Amazon, do you guys remember if they said they were just gonna use Staten Island Access Road? Or if Kalihii Street was, they said they were gonna try to stay away from Kalihii Street?
They use it. They, they came up with a map and they showed us during certain times, they were gonna access Kalihii Street like from ten thirty, yeah, certain time of the day.
Certain time.
Yeah, I would like um young brothers, however, to be, be present, because right now they're like a, a thought at my side in regards to safety in the area, all the streets are blocked and it's not one day a week, it's sometimes seven days a week.
Yeah, I left a message for young brothers that haven't had any correspondence, and that's in the last two weeks.
Avoidance, yeah, so I'm also trying to email with um other area lawmakers to see.
Medicate a, a traffic medication plan.
Huge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do agree with Amazon, ask if they can come to our next meeting or try to schedule that in for Commando Schools. I'm not gonna hold my breath.
Yeah, I know, it's gonna be hard, but it's also like, you know, if you're doing community work with hard and alongside like the wonderful spaces and couple of long, you know.
I agree. We should be part of that greater conversation.
My guess is, yeah, like.
I do agree with them. If they build it, what are they gonna build and who is that gonna be for? What is the price point gonna be and how is it gonna impact everybody in the long run? So I do agree with that, I'll try to reach out again.
Oh, and one more, um how about like the developments that are going in like KPT and also One-on-One School Street? I'm curious, like, who is the people running those?
That would be, well, KPT is federal, but that is again public housing, yeah, so we would have to get somebody from the state.
So it's state.
Okay, 'cause.
Even that, even the other businesses, I was.
All, all of the states, yeah, they're all states.
It's definitely.
Okay, so I am curious on like how the developments are going in terms of the house. Um, oh, okay, I'll, I'll save that for later.
The diviners.
They're coming.
The diviners, yeah.
The Kaua Manu housing too, are they coming back?
That are.
They, they supposed to get like funding, yeah. They're like, that's what they said.
I, I think they're coming back when they, um they have more updates. So, they, they gotta present it to you guys again.
We'll see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what they said last time. Okay, um any. Okay, um, anything online?
Yeah.
No, hearing them, we're gonna move along to city elected officials, starting with Mayor Rick Blandiardi's representative, Deputy Director Stephen Courtney, Department of Information Technology.
Yes, good evening to Kalih, Kalih, Kalima, and good board members and residents. My name is Stephen Courtney, Mayor's Representative and Deputy Director for Department of Information Technology. I will start with highlights from Mayor's newsletter. Link can be found in the chat. The city and county of Honolulu announces a new landfill site on Oahu. After extensive review, the city and county of Honolulu announced last month that it has moved to that area northwest of Oahu as the proposed location for Oahu's next landfill. The city wins a two million dollar grant for affordable housing development in evenly from the Federal Transit Administration as part of a twenty twenty-four pilot program for transit-oriented development planning. I have some other items that are not on the newsletter. Registration for the twenty twenty-five neighborhood board elections is now. Candidates can register online at the Neighborhood Commission Office website at www.honolulu.gov slash NCO. Voter registration is available via paper form also at honolulu.gov slash NCO. And questions can be directed to NCO at eight oh eight seven six eight three seven one zero. And some important dates to be mindful of. Candidate and voter filing deadline is Friday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. The voting begins on Friday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, twenty-two. And the voting ends on Friday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, twenty-two. The city is looking for exceptional individuals to join the Ocean Safety Commission with initial meeting vote at July twenty twenty-five. In preparation for its launch, the city is seeking by qualified and passionate members of the public to serve as commissioners. And then next, I have four follow-up items regarding to an issue. In regards to the cleanup of Kapalama Canal, this is from Cherry Bennett. Um, I'm happy to report that DFM has performed maintenance on the upper portion of Kapalama Canal. Alka on the H-one freeway started on Saturday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Work should have been completed by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Pending good weather conditions and resource availability at that time. In regards to the sewer increase, Member Cullen had concerns about the increase and requested a representative from the Department of Environmental Services attend. Uh, we're, we will work on getting Environmental Services Director Abcock or his representative to an upcoming meeting. Nine-one-one non-emergency calls. This was from Member Cullen regards to the issue with nine-one-one system regarding non-emergency calls. The Honolulu Police Department has paid for it at the Police Commission's office, also for the PCOs. During the times when we are experiencing a high volume of nine-one-one calls, our PCOs will prioritize emergency calls over non-emergency calls. Therefore, the non-emergency calls may be referred to as delays. HPD has been focusing on recruiting and hiring more PCOs as quickly as possible to better service the community. And finally, uh, regards to the need for increased HPD presence. Resident Kathy Kahalawa reported that different groups of boys are hanging around in public access lane in her house and a maya housing on Women's Street, making a lot of noise, smoking, et cetera. HPD respond, District Five Kalih Patrol units conducted checks in that area from December seventh to the twelfth, twenty twenty-four. During checks, they did not observe any violations or nuisances. Miss Kahalawa is correct and immediately contacted nine-one-one when she does see these illegal activities. Officers will continue to monitor the location and take enforcement action when violations are observed. If you have any issues with the city to report, please use Honolulu three-one-one. And honolulu.info is the one stop shop for updates from the city. That concludes the mayor's report, thank you, any questions?
Any questions for the board?
Evelyn? Hi, um, so I've been using three-one-one a lot. Um, although I'm submitting my request through there, nothing has been, um, there was no response from DFM. So, about a month ago, there was um, an attempted murder, someone was sleeping in an abandoned limousine and somebody came and set that on fire. I had reported that limousine to be removed through three-one-one a week prior to that happening. Um, to date, it's still there. There's a lot of um, reports I have made through three-one-one to DFM in regards to the area on Awiki Street and all of the um, abandoned vehicles. Um, I go up to the vehicles, I take pictures, uh, show the license plates and submit that and no response from DFM. There's the back end of a truck bed. I think I submitted that twice and it's still there. Some boats, last time, um, the response was in November that these boats actually have owners and they're not abandoned. But if you go up to the boat, the boat's uh stickers to give them, um, right, to be on the road is all expired. And actually, boats aren't supposed to be on the road and it's been there for many, many months. So that was the response I believe I I got back in November. That when um, DFM went out there, they found that the owner came to talk to them about the boat and that it's 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 his and it's not abandoned. But the paperwork says that it's not up to date. Um, another thing is, um, I don't know if it falls under city or state, but having cameras on Awiki Street was were surely helped to deter any type of illegal dumping or criminal activities that's happening now, because I've noticed a lot of new faces. And I think it's um, our incoming um homeless being sent from out of state. Off of the airport, they eventually find their their way down to Awiki Street, cuz these are all new faces and they're very scary and they they make um, me not wanna have my grandchildren walk around even couple of houses away from my home, because I'm that scared for their safety. Um, not letting them be outdoors without an adult around. So, um, I know the city is trying to do something with downtown for the thirty-year-olds that's coming up. Safety, sanitary and security, I think they need to address us first, because um us fifty-year-olds need it more um, in terms of being safe, sanitary, as well as security opposed to what's going on in Chinatown. Chinatown is very deserted. But um I think where I'm at, I need a lot of help. And I raise my grandchildren there too, so. Although we're in between businesses, I'm still a taxpayer and I I want results. DFM needs to respond, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I I just let me um, respond to that of in regards to a lot of those requests that are put in through Honolulu three-one-one, where most of them, I guess can kinda tell me on the timeframe, because I can look those up and see what I can do about getting response from DFM.
Okay. Any questions from online or any questions from the board?
This is, I mean, this is just a comment, I I feel Board Member Cullen's frustration a little bit, I mean, I understand it completely, it's just, I mean, even the excuse, I mean, what she's saying is true, like those those, you can't store a boat on the road and don't not have the right paperwork and and you know, that only contributes to the, I guess, the the nature of the neighborhood where people feel like they can move in, maybe start building structures, the homeless and, I mean, it's almost like the person looking at that was just, you know, they talked to somebody, they don't wanna I guess alienate them, but they're breaking the law too, I mean, it's just, it it's odd that we're, you know, it's just being allowed to happen and now she has to make another submittal and even in November, I mean, she's she was mentioning in the last meeting that these weren't being responded to and not not even a a courtesy response, I mean, it's it's a great program when it works, but I mean, I just think that, I mean, it's I could just feel for her, I mean, I don't know, that's all I have to say, it's not really even a question, but I I know it's not your fault, but thank you. I mean, it's just, I I I I I get frustrated for her, I mean, it just makes sense.
No, I I do feel their frustration, um, I do I do sense that and the technology is good, I mean, we we do get the notices, but on the other side of that, do wanna make sure that whatever department is responsible, that they should be responding as well, as well as put in response in the system, so the citizens know what's happening. And so that's the part that I would like to at least fix. But I don't know, give you a time for when we get fixed, at least to get a response back, that that I was trying to at least try to get in that month.
I'm doing the job.
Yeah.
Stephen, I have something, um, this is going back to October, so I do agree with um Evelyn that there is definitely a lag in the response, um, and action, active action that needs to happen, so going back in October of last year, three-one-one, I I think I made three different um messages and alerts for the Kalih Stream and the service-resistant encampment that is just taking over the entire stream near Marukai shopping area. Um, they're very service-resistant, I have tried to go out there myself, they're kind of aggressive and violent, again, service-resistant. Nonetheless, that has become a biohazard area and it's hazardous to people walking past too, that's just trying to go to catch a bus. Because some of those people are very aggressive. They might be suffering from some substance abuse, mental illness, or a mixture of both, it just seems. So somebody's gonna get hurt. And again, I, this is going back to last year in October and I have records on it for three-one-one too, so I do agree with Evelyn, there's a there's a lack of follow-through.
Okay, well, I guess the um, I guess there is one other, um, I guess sitting, uh, think have you tried calling Core, even though that may not help with the, uh, I guess the more aggressive homeless, but um, I, let me give you the number for Core, this this is the Community Outreach Response Engagement and that number is eight oh eight seven six eight two six seven three. Again, seven six eight two six seven three.
Okay.
So at least, that's the one entity, at least if there's a um need in regards to medical services, that's something that they can at least get that started through through Core. And if they, but if they, but if the homeless is there is then I would definitely get a call five one.
Okay, Evelyn?
I I got one more question for you, Steve. Um, so I tried to call Prosecutor's Office today from my um, my cellphone, it went straight to voicemail, straight to voicemail several times. I called it from a landline phone, um, and it went right through. So, when I finally made the connection, the person that I spoke to told me today that sometimes, um, it, the the cellphone isn't able to connect to city offices, so I don't know if that's true, if they just aren't, they they block by numbers, so, um, I I wanna know if that's, if there's any truth to that.
No, it should not be.
But she said that I, landline to landline is fine, but when it comes to cellphone to the city office, so
Okay.
you know, I, blocking.
Okay, extra, that's something, again, since um, I'm with information technology, that is something we can look into as well. So that's a smartphone call to a city number at the Prosecutor's Office?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, you all know. Thank you.
Okay.
Any more questions from um, the community? Not hearing them, thank you so much, Stephen.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, see you next month. Can we move along with Councilmember Radian Cordaro, our representative?
Hello, good good evening, everybody, could you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, Happy New Year. Uh, we
Happy New Year.
We emailed our newsletter and we delivered some hard copies. I just wanna highlight um, some of the very important things that we included in our newsletter. First of all, as we ring in the new year, Councilmember Cordaro is sending her sincere gratitude for your continued trust and support. She looks forward to another term serving our community. Next is, I know that in the beginning of the meeting, there was some discussion about the Transit Construction Mitigation Fund. In the chat, I um I put in the website for any information about the program. So, and I also wanna report on that, that um the application portal for the Transit Construction Mitigation Fund will open on Monday, January twenty-seven at ten A M. And the application deadline is Friday, February seven at ten A M. The city will be accepting online applications only on a first come, first served basis. A total of twenty-two grants, each in the amount of ten thousand will be awarded. Like I mentioned again, um, additional information, I, uh, there's a link that I sent on the chat and it's also in our newsletter. And if you have any questions too, you can call seven six eight five seven six four. There is going to be a public hearing scheduled to update a forty-year-old community garden rules. The Department of Parks and Recreation is finalizing its effort to update the forty-year-old rules governing the Honolulu Recreational Community Garden Program. Culminating years of community meetings and outreach, KPR has scheduled a public hearing to receive input regarding revisions to the existing rules first established in nineteen seventy-five and last revised in nineteen eighty-four. An in-person and virtual public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, from five thirty P M to seven thirty P M in Foster Botanical Gardens Conserv- Conservatory Classroom located within the historic fourteen-acre garden. For more information, please vis- um, check the link that we included on our newsletter. Okay, um, the Honolulu City Council establishes new committees and assignments. Um, Councilmember Radian Cordaro remained to be the council floor leader, but um, she is now no longer the Chair of the Committee on Budget. She is now the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Infrastructure and Transportation. Uh, please check out the the um, new committee assignments and chairmanship in each committees. So for legislative updates, um, I wanna uh, there is a resolution that was reported out of Committee for Adoption on January fourteen last Tuesday, and that is Resolution twenty-five dash three, reaffirming the city policy that landfills should not be located above drinking water resources. And Councilmember um, Cordaro as well as um, Councilmember Wire co-introduced that resolution. Another update is Bill nineteen twenty twenty-four F T one C D one establishing a resident preference for city affordable housing programs. This is co-introduced by Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Stam and Councilmember Cordaro. This was heard during the January fourteen Committee on Housing Sustainability and Economy and Health. And it was reported out for the passage on third reading. Lastly, for our legislative updates is Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-five. This is requesting the city administration submit the updated twenty twenty-five local hazard mitigation plan to the city council. This is introduced by Councilmember Cordaro and will be heard in the Committee on Public Safety and Customer Service meeting this coming Thursday at one P M. Okay, and and that's all my report for this month.
Thank you so much, any questions for the board?
Um, yes, I have, so, um, this is a probably like a question or concern, but uh, I go to the Monova Dog Park and people have asked if we could put in a request for an assessment of the lodge, large dog park fences, cuz there's holes in it and to request for maybe solar-powered lights? If the regular lights can't be input in there? Um, yeah. That's it.
So Moanalua Park, right? Okay. Are you talking about the lar, the fence for the large dog? It's, needs to be repaired?
Yeah, from the streetlights, um, to the entrance.
To the entrance, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll look into that. And there's also a request for a solar lights for the dog park?
Lights in general, but if solar power is more doable, that'd be great. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community online?
No.
Hearing none. Thank you so much, Dina. Give the best to Radien. I'm gonna move along to Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos-Tam or Representative.
Aloha, everyone. This is Lynn Robinson for Councilmember Dos Santos-Tam. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, firstly, I wanna thank Dina from Councilmember Cordaro's office for her comprehensive report. I, I will be very brief. She covered. Thanks, Dina. Um, so, um, I put the link for, um, Councilmembers' newsletter, um, the January newsletter, but you can find all of his newsletters in that link and also all of my contact information. I am the Constituent Services Director in Councilmember's office, so I'm your person to reach out to for all your community, um, concerns. Um, I did also wanna update that, um, Councilmember is no longer, um, the Chair of the, uh, Transportation Committee and the, um, Legal Affairs Committee, but is now, um, the Budget Chair. So, um, they did a little switcheroo. So that's good. Um, I, I also, um, have a, have an update that the, um, the installation of the Rapid Flash Beacons at the intersection of school and Ahunui Street are going to get installed. So they'll be solar-powered and flash only when activated by a pedestrian ready to cross. So this has been a long time coming in partnership with, um, AARP. And, um, the project is, um, here, let me, the schedule, uh, for construction will, I think, begin... Okay, so it should have begun yesterday, but I think it might be beginning of next week. Construction will occur between eight thirty and three thirty PM on weekends, on weekdays only. And we expect it will take almost twenty days once the work starts. Assuming the weather holds, we should be wrapped up by the end of the month. And again, this was in partnership with, um, AARP. Um, thirty thousand dollars of that money went towards the project. So again, long time coming and we're super excited about it. Um, but I think that that concludes my report. So if anyone, I, did I say Happy New Year? Let me make, let me make it clear. Happy New Year to everyone. Um, yeah, does anyone have any questions for me to take back to Councilmember?
Any questions from the community online? Hearing none. Thank you so much, Lynn. You're amazing and Happy New Year again.
Right back at you. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You too.
See you next month. I'm gonna move along to community updates. U S Army Garrison Hawaii Military Report, Selena Kantowski. Yep, can I see you right now? Right on the side, right on the edge.
On the edge? Good, uh, good evening, Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me. Um, Happy New Year to everyone as well. Um, our announcements for February, um, U S Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair. February eighteenth at Alamanu Military Reservation Training Room, starts at eight thirty, ends at two. Um, it's open to the public. They'll have provisional hiring that day. Bring, um, two references, proof of ID, social security card. Um, lots of job openings. Everybody has job openings, so. Um, but it, they also have openings in child use services, so if anybody is interested in that. And if you apply and get hired, you have tons of benefits, including commissary and PX privileges, so. That's, uh, that's a hot. Especially because just regular DOD civilians don't have that privilege. So.
Oh, that's excellent.
So we're doing, we're continuing our training for the, for January, mostly on Schofield Barracks and East Range. Um, so if you have any questions about that training, go ahead and call at any time. Um, but I do wanna read a note. Um, and I'm just gonna read it verbatim because it's, it comes directly from the Garrison Commander Colonel Rachel Sullivan. So on behalf of the U S Army Garrison Hawaii and the entire military community, we extend our deepest condolences for the tragic loss of life and injuries suffered during the New Year's fireworks blast. Our hearts are heavy and we share in your grief during this difficult time. Please know that your community is not alone. And we stand with you all and are ready to offer our support and strength in the coming weeks and months ahead. So if anybody has any need in regards to that, please feel free to reach out to us at any time.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thanks.
Any questions from the board? Any questions online? Hearing none. Thank you so much, Selena. Thank you for your support. And it says, uh, P. Schools, hearing school report? Moving along to state elected officials, Senator Carl Rhodes, District thirteen, or Representative?
Sarah.
Sarah?
Hello, hi, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, yes. My name is Sarah Thorne and I'm the new Legislative Aid for Senator Rhodes and I'll be relaying all of his messages for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
All right.
A new updated twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five COVID vaccine has been approved for use. COVID shots are now similar to flu shots in that they target the most prevalent strain of COVID. This vaccine is not only meant to prevent symptoms of every COVID, it's not meant to prevent symptoms of every COVID variant. Rather, its aim is to prevent against severe illness, hospitalization, and death. I met with the Oahu Invasive Species Committee, who provided me with highlights for District thirteen. There are two positive samples of the rapid Ohea death way in the back of the district, with one of them receiving treatment. Myconnea is nicknamed the green cancer of the Pacific. It is listed as a noxious weed by the Hawaii DOA and is one of the top threats to Hawaii's watershed and forest ecosystems. Myconnea is currently pervasive throughout the forest and are presently being treated. There are at least two active sites for little fire ants in the Macau, um, Eva portion of the district. And several surveys were conducted for presence of koki frogs, but none were detected. Please do not hesitate to call my office at eight oh eight five eight six six one three zero with any questions or concerns, or you can also email at senroads@capital.hawaii.gov. And if anyone has any questions, I can sure take those and try to answer them or bring them back for the Senator for next, for next meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Any questions from the community? Hearing none. Thank you so much. Give the best to Carl Rhodes.
I sure will. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. See you next month. Okay, so moving along to Senator Donna Mercado Kim or Representative? Crystal?
Hi, good evening, um, Chair Evenez, Board, um, Board and Community Members. This is Kathy Lee from, um, Senator Kim's office. Um, just wanted to say today was the first day of the opening day for the legislature and, um, our office has some new faces. And one of them is Crystal, and she will be, she's a Legislative Assistant and she will be delivering the community report for Senator Kim tonight.
Thank you so much.
Hello, uh, I'm Crystal. Um, as Kathy mentioned, today was the opening day of the thirty-third legislator. Um, to track a bill through the legislative process, you can, uh, register for account on the Hawaii State Legislature website. From your account, you'll be able to create precise, a measure, tracking list, submit testimony online, um, uh, and receive hearing, uh, notice, notifications. Um, additionally, we, there is a e-waste recycling event at, uh, Alamanu Elementary School on Saturday, January eighteenth from eight AM to noon. Uh, we understand this event is not located in this neighborhood boards, uh, district, but events like this don't occur often and you may have extra e-waste that you need to dispose of. Items, uh, accepted are TVs, laptops, computers, and cell phones. Uh, lithium batteries, cooking appliances, and hazardous materials will not be accepted. And all proceeds will be used to support, uh, Alamanu Elementary School. Um, and that is all we have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Now, thank you so much, Crystal, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
See you next month. Uh, moving along to Senator Glenn Wakai or Representative?
Hi, good evening, um, Chair Evenez and Board, Kalihii Neighborhood Board. Uh, my name is Ashley. Um, I'm Senator Wakai's Legislative Aid. Um, and I will be delivering his, um, Neighborhood Board Report. I did email, um, it over to Chair Evenez, um, yesterday. Um, but first of all, Happy New Year, Happy twenty twenty-five. Um, uh, Senator Wakai wanted to highlight, um, a few things, um, in tonight's meeting. The first one is obviously the fireworks incident, uh, that happened in Alamanu. Um, so he met with, um, D L E, um, right at the beginning of January. Um, and he's discussing, um, enforcement issues, um, regarding the laws. So right now, he's not focused too much on legislating fireworks. He's focused on enforcing the laws that we already have. Um, he, um, he wants to update you folks, saying that the Illegal Fireworks Task Force, uh, issued its report highlighting its seizure of approximately one hundred eighty-seven thousand pounds of illegal fireworks from shipping containers, um, in twenty twenty-three. We're still waiting for the twenty twenty-four report. Um, and another, oh, uh, sorry, and another forty thousand, uh, pounds in twenty twenty-four. Um, another, um, another issue he wanted to highlight is the, um, the progress that's being made in Kalihii regarding the ports. Uh, I know a lot of us, uh, who drive through Kalihii on Nimitz Highway, we get really frustrated when we see Pasha and Matson containers all lined up on the right side of the road, blocking, um, one of the lanes, heading, heading towards town. Um, so, uh, he did a Kapalama Container Terminal Tour, um, to get the progress of what's happening with construction. Um, it began in twenty seventeen and it's looking to hopefully be done in October of this year. Um, it's gonna hopefully alleviate so much traffic and get, um, uh, get the traffic flowing for residents that pass through over there. Um, one final thing that he wanted to highlight, um, Senator Wakai is no longer Chair of the Public Safety Committee. Um, that went, that honor went to Senator Brandon Alefante. He is the new Chair of the, uh, Public Safety Committee. Uh, Senator Wakai will be Chair of a new committee. It is the, um, um, Energy and Intergovernmental Affairs.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm open and available for any, uh, questions, comments, concerns that I can take back to him.
Thank you so much. Any questions for the board? Evelyn, go ahead.
Hi, um, did you email me, Ashley? Are you, Ashley Niibu?
Niibu, yes, I did.
Okay, okay. Um, so that was my other concern, but, um, so he did mention about, um, so I guess this is also for the Governor's Representative, uh, my, my huge concern, and I think I emailed Wakai with a video as well as to Radien showing me using, um, Libby Street, trying to come around on Awiki Street and being head-on with about six vehicles because of the tractor-trailer's parked. Yeah, it's their staging area. One of the lanes is their staging area. Um, luckily, I was smart enough to, to capture that um, and send it over to my, um, law, um, makers in the area like Wakai. But I don't see any changes. I, I know he's saying things are gonna be different soon. It's been ongoing since twenty seventeen, but really, it just takes one person to get injured. And I'm documenting this because if that person happens to be me, you guys have been informed. Or anybody else in the area, if it hits the news, I'll be ready to share my documents with that person. Because this has been ongoing, um, and again, it takes one person to, to really make everything go south for everyone involved. It's not only on Nimitz, it's on Awiki Street. Like I mentioned to him before, I sent him a map, I highlighted everything, areas of concern. Um, my, my solution to, to him and to the area businesses like, um, Young Brothers, because really, it stems from Young Brothers, is to have the parking along Awiki, all the way up Libby Street, no parking. No parking on the right-hand side of the road so that all of these tractor-trailers, which is, um, important for our lifeline, for our community, to be staged alongside that part. When there's abandoned vehicles, homeless people living on the sidewalk, and, and all of these vehicles that's not being addressed and, and/or removed, the trucks have to park on the lane and use that as their staging. I'm coming around the corner and I face head-on with eight headlights. So what do I do then? So, um, that's really important. It needs to be addressed. Um, very few residents, but I'm a very important resident to my community. So that's one thing for him to do. I did mention to you guys and you addressed about San Island Park. I wanna know when is camping gonna be open again? Cause it doesn't take them six months to try and figure out who's gonna be monitoring or enforcing illegal permits at, um, San Island Park. So it's about time for them to start opening it up again because it doesn't take more than six months for them to figure out who's gonna enforce it. Uh, another thing, um, I believe there is an RC trap in San Island, but people have been using San Island Park as a RC trap. I went into the park this past Sunday, my car and all the parts in the parking lot was covered with red dirt right across from the caretaker's residence. Um, you need to have a special use permit, and I wanna know if they did have one. I know, um, that's not allowed. There's a lot of private activities go on within the park, cause I see it myself and I know that's not supposed to be going on. Um, but that's something big, uh, since it was right in front of the caretaker's residence, I figured he can speak to that. Um, I'll come back on when the statement presented.
Oh, yeah, I, I'm just waiting until you.
Um.
Yeah, I was just waiting until you.
Oh, oh, um, I'll wait. Thank you.
Sorry, Ashley, I have something. For Keke Lagoon area, to make sure that the playground, the lights, and also the roadwork, potholes and things that are fixed, maintenance, overall maintenance of the park area and recreational use for the general public needs to be done. That's something that was raised for the Keke Lagoon Park recreational area. So if you could just.
Can I add on something to what Evelyn was saying too? So for the cars, if they open up the Libby and Awiki Street for staging and stuff, the residents in the neighborhood will kind of want more parking. I mean, a lot of people don't park back there ready because of abandoned vehicles. But that also need to address the businesses that illegally park their commercial vehicles and then also the auto, auto shops, yikes. But yeah, cause it's over saturated with cars over there, which leaves the residents having to park further from where they live. And so there'll be more complaints later if they clear out that side for businesses and be like, what about the residents also?
Okay, so that's... Sorry, I'm just making sure. I'm checking Google Maps. So Awiki and Libby Street, right?
Yeah, from San Island access road, like right in front of Amazon. Amazon, they, they turning out to be one of the best neighbors in the community. I'm telling you that much. Everybody else, um,
Cause you for watch them, that's why.
I'm tired of watching them and telling them, you know, to be good neighbors, but Auntie's watching you.
She is a neighborhood watch.
Okay, so, um, just so that I can reiterate all of the concerns, um, so you're concerned about the staging parking on, um, Awiki and Libby. Um, there's no parking because of all the tractor-trailers. And it's also, you guys are also worried about obvious, obvious head-on injuries.
Yeah.
We're also, we're also concerned about the. I'm sorry.
It's not the, the tractor trailer no parking. It's all the area businesses, like the auto body shops. They put their vehicles on the road or they abandon cars. That whole place is, is littered with abandoned vehicles, which leads to other illegal activities happening. And it's not being removed in a timely fashion as it, as it's being reported. And so Young Brothers need to have their, people need to bring their stuff to Young Brothers, but they're parked on the road.
Okay.
So if all of the illegal vehicles were removed and during certain hours, that could be used as a staging. Like say, I don't know what time from six to ten, like no parking, this is for staging. Then the area residents would have a, a chance to park from all the other times, you know?
Okay, so that's kind of one of your suggestions is to create staging times?
I mean, and then they should also, Young Brothers should also be responsible for policing the area, cleaning up the area, and paying the state a fee. Right? If that's what they want, they should pay for it. For the inconvenience. I think so.
Okay. Okay, so starting from the top again. We are concerned with the Libby and Awiki Street. The parking of the tractor trailers, the abandoned vehicles, as well as where do these businesses have parking, right? There's nothing available for you folks, as well as, as well as the residents, right?
Yeah, it can be like certain hours.
Right, yeah. So and then, so your suggestion is to create staging times, let the residents and businesses of the area know when they can and cannot park. Your example of like six AM to ten AM. And then you're also suggesting that Young Brothers police the area themselves and pay the state a fee for it.
Yeah, I mean, they know they're inconveniencing us. That's why they're probably not responding. They know.
Okay, I, I don't need to interrupt this at all, but if Evelyn and Ashley, if you can handle this and we can get along wrong with the rest of the board meeting for the committee.
Okay, thank you.
You guys have each other's correspondence. I take you guys do.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. We're gonna move along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Danny Holt? Not here, thank you. Representative Shirley Temple or representative?
Are you at Shirley?
No. Governor Josh Green, representative. Hi, Dre, are you there?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much for your patience. Go ahead.
The link to governor's newsletter. But since we had been talking about the concerns on Awiki, I'll just take that up if I may. Evelyn, I do want to let you know that Senator Wakai did relay to me your concerns about the parking in the far right curb on the Makai side of Awiki. So while we do not own or control why State DOT or even Harbors doesn't, we have started some conversations with the city to talk about restrictions of parking. I don't want to get anyone too excited. We're just exploring what it would take to do that and whether we might be able to test whether limited term restriction of parking might alleviate some of the concerns. So that is something we are looking into. At a previous board meeting, it was either in October or November, I did report that we were working with Young Brothers to modify their operations on the heaviest traffic days. And those are the days when the ships come in to San Island and then those trucks are carrying the containers from San Island into Young Brothers to ship to our neighbor islands. So those are generally Mondays and Thursdays. So we have been planning a pilot project to alleviate some of the congestion that occurs around the gates, both at Libby and at Waikamilo. We had anticipated that we would start that pilot in December. But where we are going to be doing that pilot program, it's on the San Island Parkway waste station. But at the same time that we're planning this, highways is replacing the scale at the waste station. So we're happy for us to do that. But we, we are looking to launch that in February. So hopefully in February, you'll see some alleviation of that congestion. And we're hoping for enhancements for safety and, and addressing some of those other concerns.
Thank you.
But I did not get that video, so Evelyn, if you maybe and the chair can exchange my contact info and get that video to me, I would like to take a look at it just for our awareness and information.
You taking questions? Oh, okay, we waiting.
Sorry, that was it for me. I, I don't know if any of them answered.
Okay, any questions for the board?
Aloha, hearts here. So as said, within community reports, I'm questioning regarding about the public housing, like the development of KBT, Kalamalu Homes, the, and my rights, just like how the developments are going basically. And also if they, if people are going to be relocated, where will they be relocated? That's something I've been very concerned about. And also, what is the building on North School Street? Because I see construction and traffic going on constantly. And it's in front of my house, so I'm like, what, what's going on there?
It's traffic everywhere on this.
For this building on North School Street, can you give me either a street address or an intersection, just so I have a better reference to?
North School Street, um.
It's where Lona Kila Housing is, right on that mountain hilltop area.
Got it, okay.
Lona Kila Housing and Public Housing Authority.
Okay.
I think it might be an extension.
Send that question to Hawaii Public Housing Authority.
Yeah.
Donald, you can go.
That property is fifteen stories, low income apartment houses. Fifteen stories is mighty big because I live across the street in a twelve-story.
Is it?
It's taking up a lot of space.
Is it gonna be like public housing? Is it gonna be mixed income, low income?
Just wait for it.
Sorry, I'm so sorry.
Um, I'll, I'll ask the appropriate agency and get a response to the chair.
Okay, that sounds fair. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Evelyn, Evelyn here. I got a couple of questions and or concerns. Let's see, let's see. So in regards to the harbor police or sheriffs, will they be able to help police like Awiki Street? Since that's kind of like HDOT. And address the issues that happens along that area. A lot of homelessness, mentally unhoused individuals. That's one thing. I received a letter from HDOT. It was a survey. I did it. I think the entire thing is, was in regards to if I would use e-bikes, bike, walk, or public transportation opposed to my own personal vehicle that costs twelve dollars and forty-eight cents a day to, to use. And I said, I would still use my car because I don't feel safe in my community. I don't feel safe walking two houses away from where I live. So safety is of utmost concern and I do not feel safe in my community. So to that survey, thanks for the ten dollars. I already spent it on Amazon. I would not use public transportation or walk because I don't feel safe. And like anything, you have to feel safe where you live and I just don't feel safe. Another thing is the dust that's coming from the construction that's going on at the Kapalama Container Terminal. I see it daily on my apartment building stairs that I own. I'll go there, I'll wash it down with the water holes, the next day it's right back again. And then I drive to San Island Park and I see the dust over there and I'm like, it's coming from these guys. Because there's no activity on our block. All the cars are covered with the same dust from Kapalama Container Terminal. If I was like the, the person who lived in the high-rise across McKinney High School that complained about the dust on the football field or baseball field and have it taken to get it, I guess analyzed to prove that it came from there, it will most definitely be coming from that site. Because it's all full of sand and coral and whatnot. That's it.
Okay, well, our, it's our contractor working on Kapalama Container Terminal. So I'll talk to the project manager and let them know that we have a complaint about dust blowing over from the construction site. That's no problem.
You know me.
Dre, I have a few comments, a positive.
Sure.
Thank you to Josh Green's office and a great pick for Major Lambert to head up the DLE. He's gonna be a great addition and he comes with a multitude of skills and talents along with getting along with community constituents such as myself. He's very easy to work with and I think our community will be better for it. So thank you so much. Good pick.
Thank you. I'll relay that to the governor.
Oh, sorry, one last thing.
What, first?
I am, with the Los Angeles fires, I'm very, on one hand thankful that Governor Green is giving them hotels and places in spite of the fires. On the other hand, I hope that this energy still continues with after the Lahaina fires because I feel like they were ignored very pretty quickly. The people in Lahaina and also the fact that they had to go back to their jobs like pretty much ASAP. It was very disappointing to see that they weren't getting the proper time to heal and have that time to understand the situation that was brought upon them. So I hope that we are giving the efforts towards Los Angeles just as we are to Lahaina.
Okay, same. I'll relay that to his office also. Thank you.
Dre, also one more thing. I'm so sorry. It's getting late. I do want to put forth what can I do to help support having a fire marshal or a fire department for the state as a way to respond to such crises that we're facing from, because of climate change and all these other things. Please email me. I don't want to take up everybody's time. But I do know this is important, that will touch the lives of everybody's on this island. So please email me, what can I do, what can we do as a community to help support that legislative avenue to build a fire department, fire marshal for the state of Hawaii for a response that will be immediate.
On that note, the governor's State of the State address is scheduled for Tuesday morning. And I believe there is a bill to that effect that will be included in the governor's bill package. And so once that package is released and those bills are introduced, I can send you the bill numbers.
Fantastic. I will be willing to give testimony and support of that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dre. I think, is there any questions online?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dre. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The best to you and Josh Green.
Thank you.
See you next month. Okay, we're gonna move on to committee reports. Any safety reports from, from safety, education, health?
She is a safety support.
Pretty much. I think the full report from the fire inspector for the state of Hawaii HFD was great. He's gonna be here every other month to keep us updated and educated and to have that online as a, as a resource for everyone. Yeah. And then next month, we're also gonna have E and B here as for explanation for the sum rate increase. Okay. So just to give you some updates on that, we're gonna move along to community resources and education institutions.
Something about health. I just want to make it clear that the reason why I created committee of health is because I'm very concerned about the well-being of people, not just physically, but also mentally and emotionally. In terms of our trans community, especially after a certain administration being composed of people. I want people to know that this is a safe space for trans people, people of non-gender, non-gender, non-conforming genders and anyone a part of the HPTQR plus community. And I hope to create a resolution regarding our community.
Community resources and education institutions, HFD, details and incidents and mapping, please visit the website, fire.honolulu.gov. And questions, please email the Public Affairs and Video Liaison at hfdandhp@honolulu.gov. Announcement, so next Kalihii Palama Neighborhood Board meeting number five, fifteen, sorry. Meeting is scheduled to be on Wednesday, February nineteen, twenty twenty-five at seven PM. The Kalihii Palama Neighborhood Board number fifteen recordings can be seen on O'Leary channel forty-nine or at o'leary.gov slash, slash live at the following times, first Monday of each month at nine PM and second and fourth Thursday of each month at eleven AM. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
See, I'll be mine.